I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, April 12th, 2021, and the time is 7:00 PM. We are present this evening in our new school board meeting room located at Northfield Public Schools District Offices formerly Longfellow School. In accordance with Governor Wal's Stay Safe Plan, this room has been set up in accordance with the plan's social distancing guidelines. In addition, all those present at the meeting will be wearing face coverings. Also attending tonight's board meeting via teleconference are Erin Bailey, Director of Community Education, Kim Briskie, Director of Technology Services, Hope Langston, Director of Instructional Services, Val Murdistorf, Director of Finance, Stephanie Strummy, Director of Child Nutrition, and Simon Tyler, Executive Director of Prairie Creek Charter School. This meeting is open to the public via livestream. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Dr. Hillman, there were just a few items in the table file.
Yes, we have a few items in this evening's table file. There's an addition to the legislative update, which is a summary of all of the current bills that are education-related in the House or Senate. That's Courtesy of Schools for Equity and Education. We have several gift agreements, increase, decrease, change in assignments, and one retirement.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. If there's no objections, we'll add these to the item, to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries. This is an opportunity for a public comment. This would allow for residents, business, property owners, parents, students, and employees of the Northfield Public School District to address the board. To accommodate the public comment portion of our meeting, we made available on the district's website the ability for the public to submit feedback to the board via email by 5:00 PM today. All submissions that follow the district policy regarding public comment would be read now by myself. We have no public comment submissions this evening, so we'll move on with two announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman.
Good evening. I have several announcements this evening, and this evening I start with the sadness as our district has mourned the loss of Lily O'Donnell over the last week. Our district experienced this terrible loss when Lily, who was a junior at Northfield High School, died from injuries sustained in a car accident. Our district's prayers are with Lily's family and our Northfield High School student body as they begin processing this tragedy. The Northfield High School student body were able to have an option today to attend Lily's funeral via livestream, and our student support team has been available for students over the past week, and I ask all here and on Zoom with us to observe a moment of silence honoring Lily O'Donnell. Thank you. We want to congratulate our three National Merit Scholars. This year, we recognize commended students Julian Brunel and Anders Ripley, and finalist Martin Bryce. These students will be recognized at the senior awards ceremony tentatively scheduled for Wednesday, May 12th at 6:30 PM. Mark Enzru, a high school guidance counselor, has been recognized as one of the outstanding alumni from the University of Wisconsin at River Falls, the Department of Counseling and School of Psychology. Dr. Caroline A. Baker, the department chair, writes, "Mark has served in many roles to support our program and the profession of school counseling. As a stakeholder, Mark served our program for many years. Mark is always present and engaged, offering thoughtful questions and ideas to help us move forward." Further, Mark provides thoughtful information as a guest speaker in her fall semester career counseling class, and each year he discusses the many successes he has had in collaboration with so many at Northfield to provide high school students with opportunities for career exploration and decision-making. His experience is powerful for our graduate students to hear, so we congratulate Mark Enzru on that wonderful honor. We also want to acknowledge the winners of the City of Northfield Mayor for a Day Contest, and the Mayor for the Day Contest is a program to engage local fourth and fifth grade students in civic engagement through a written essay contest. Our recipients are announced and awarded by Mayor Pawnell at the annual State of the City address, and we want to congratulate the following students: Fourth graders Camille Holman from Greenville Park Elementary and Mackenzie Lambert from Sibley Elementary, as well as Ella Rich from Sibley Elementary; fifth grade winners Tisby Joffin from Greenville Park Elementary, Ayella Morgan from Bridgewater Elementary, and Isabella Moreno from Bridgewater Elementary. We also have a number of items here to honor our DECA students. And so first Jenna Waitala, a senior at Northfield High School, is the recipient of the 2021 DECA Emerging Leader Honor Award. This award recognizes students studying marketing, finance, hospitality, and management for being an academically prepared, community-oriented, professionally responsible, experienced leader through her participation in DECA. Congratulations to Jenna. We also want to congratulate the following students who earned trips to the DECA state competition, and this is a long list because we have really kind of a juggernaut going with DECA here. Alex Broniak, Quick Serve Restaurant Management; Malaney DeChamp, Retail Merchandising; Quinnlin Edwards, Quick Serve Restaurant Management; Clara Falcon Geist, Sports and Entertainment; Zibby Hannafell, Travel and Tourism; Franklin Hartwell, Retail Merchandising; Roxanne Kleberger, Principles of Hospitality and Tourism; Josh Kruger, Marketing Management and Integrated Marketing Campaign; Maggie Malika, Sports and Entertainment and Integrated Marketing Campaign; Savannah Melles, Principles of Business Management; Landon Neeson, Principles of Hospitality and Tourism; Karina Ochiato, Human Resources Management; Stephanie Perez, Travel and Tourism; Sydney Peterson, Sports and Entertainment and Integrated Marketing Campaign; Sochi Valdez, Principles of Hospitality and Tourism; Ryan Will, Marketing Management and Integrated Marketing Campaign; Lucia Wilkum, Hotel and Lodging Management; and Jenna Waitala, Business Services, Marketing and Integrated Marketing Campaign. Quite a list of state qualifiers for DECA, a wonderful program led by Julie Wolner, and really appreciate the program that she has built. We also had a number of athletic honors as the winter season had commenced. And so we want to acknowledge that our wrestling team was the one AA section champions, and Jackson Barron was an individual section champion in Boys Swim and Dive. We had a number of state tournament qualifiers as well. The 200 medley relay, which broke the school record, was Ryan Malika, Jen's Caston, Owen Lemkool, and Eric Larson. Eric Larson also qualified in the 200 intermediate medley, and Ryan Malik in the 100 Fly and the 100 Backstroke. Our Alpine skiers Libby Brust and Olivia Murphy qualified for state. In gymnastics, Addie Dapp qualified for state. Our Olympic weight team also sent a number of people to state, including Isabella Lawrence, Riley Nelson, Tess Weeby, Jake Kick, Carson Munch, Jackson Jurdie, Spencer Melgren, and Felix Hannafell. Nordic Ski, two-state qualifier Sam Folland and Martin Bryce. Our Knowledge Bowl team, which won the state championship over the weekend, Colin Thomas Green, Sax and Eggy, Andrew Ryden, Wyatt Barber, Max Cass, and Grace Cass, and Piper Morning, Julian Brunel, Owen Riley, and James Shuffleton. And our chess qualifiers Ruben Mank, Kalen Brotland, William Beaumaster, Wyatt Barber, Nick Patterson, and Linus Ruchuba. So when we think about it, what a great piece just to complete those winter seasons, and the success that we had both athletically and of course in these other really awesome activities that you can see offer a lot of different choices for kids in how to showcase their skills. So congratulations to all of these students on their success in the winter season. And that is our announcements for this evening.
Excellent. Thank you. Board members have any questions or comments or anything they would like to add? No? Okay. Thank you. All right. So we are ready to move on then for our first item for for discussion and report. We will begin with the Prairie Creek Community School contract renewal application. As a reminder, Executive Director Simon Tyler will be here present on Zoom for any questions or comments. Dr. Hillman, are you leading the?
I'm leading the initial. So what we have before you tonight is the draft, a draft of the contract for the next five-year term with Prairie Creek Community School. As you know, we are one of only two remaining traditional public school districts who go through the arduous process of becoming a charter school authorizer in Minnesota. And I know that when we have a dialogue about charter schools, especially when we think about them from the national level, there's often a perception of really the local traditional school district and the charter schools being at loggerheads. That's what you do see throughout the country. I am proud to say that here in Northfield, we have a long history of not just good but outstanding relationships with our two charter schools for whom we are the authorizer. It is an unusual arrangement that we have. We've talked with this about with, about this with you many times. What we're here in this capacity this evening is to talk about the next contract for Prairie Creek. Prairie Creek has completed successfully. It's, it is completing successfully its previous five-year contract under the leadership of my good friend Simon Tyler and his board, and I am going to be recommending to you that we enter into another five-year contract. The contract that you have, I did catch a couple of typographical errors in the contract this evening that we will catch. The processes, I'm sharing it with you this evening as a really kind of a first reading. I've got Simon to answer any questions, and Simon, just to give you a heads up, I have you talk a little bit about the goals and the different approach that you're going to use to the goals. Is that something you're able to do for me? All right, very good. He will in just a moment. Then the next step in the process is that after you hear this tonight, I will also make a submission to the Minnesota Department of Education to ask them to review the contract and to provide us any feedback about the contract that might prevent them from approving it. This is, this is a contract template that we have used, and it has been previously approved by the Department of Ed, so we try to keep up on the changes. It's possible there might be a change here or there that we have to add that we just missed in terms of as the department has updated their requirements over the years, because only having two charter schools, we don't do this every year, right? So and then I'll bring it back. Once we have that from the Minnesota Department of Education, which I anticipate would be within the next couple of weeks, we'll bring it back for you for approval. Prairie Creek's board will approve it, and then we will be able to enter into another five-year contract. As you know, we heard from Simon in January with his annual report, and I know we always appreciate your annual report, Simon. Simon and I have been meeting off and on about the contract. Appreciate him and Board Chair Ben Miller's work on this. And Prairie Creek is doing something a little bit different with their goals this year, this contract compared to previous contracts. Something that I really like how they're going to tie it to their world's best workforce goals. Simon, would you just talk a little bit about the modification and how you're approaching these goals versus the last time around?
Absolutely. First of all, thank you for letting me join your meeting tonight, Dr. Hillman, Northfield School Board. I appreciate his time in your agenda. We greatly value this relationship and and grateful for the time and care you're putting into this process with us. As for goals, Dr. Hillman, and I've talked about this quite a bit over the last couple of months, as a public charter school, we also engage with the world's best workforce. So in our research on goals which are both relevant and useful for us in this contract to monitor student achievement, we have done more than alignment with the key pillars of the world's best workforce, children ready for school, students ready for career and college. We'll be focusing gaps, we'll be focusing on economic achievement gaps, which is a very relevant population at Prairie Creek that we, we study for growth opportunities, and also students ready for career and college is measured by growth. So clearly, we're a K-5 elementary school, and the primary standardized measures we have for this work are using the state MCA assessments, continuing the process of prior contracts of doing comparison data points with our resident district, really for the purpose of giving your board a sense of our progress year by year, but also utilizing really authentic data points which are more site-based for us. In terms of literacy, we do use Fontis and Penel for benchmarking student literacy progress, and we want to keep that standardized point of where students are going to be at the end of kindergarten, first grade, second grade as we work towards all students reading well by third-grade literacy. So that piece is in there. Beyond the, we'll use MCA data to look at the subgroup around students who qualify for three and reduced lunch to note our progress in the area of math and literacy as we support students there. And then finally, we have adopted a new assessment, FastBridge, which we'll be introducing next year. So we're really this spring going through a process of review and learning about that assessment tool. The reason for this adoption and using that measurement point in this contract rather than the maps which we've previously had as a goal in the contract is we're developing an intervention model. We're a small school, but we have applied for an access grant. We're going to use FastBridge to give us the baseline data to establish where we can support students who who do not qualify for special education support, but, but we know they're performing below grade level and need our staffing and curriculum attention. So we've put some new goals in around that, and in my conversation with Dr. Hillman, I also acknowledged that whenever you adopt a new assessment, you are sort of entering into a new world where it might take a year or two to establish that sort of baseline of data, and these goals could possibly be adjusted going forward, but they're a starting point for us to reduce the number of students who will be identified as some risk or high-risk categories when we use this assessment in the fall. So beyond these achievement points, we'll also have the regular pieces in our contract where we're monitoring with you on an annual basis our financial performance, measures around governance, and so on and so forth. Yeah, I welcome any questions.
Yes, thanks, Simon. And I do want to point out that this November, we will celebrate 20 years of our relationship with Prairie Creek. So the original, back then it was called sponsorship, was executed in November of 2001. So we are looking at having a 20-year relationship between the school district and Prairie Creek. So I think we should also celebrate that, Simon.
Absolutely. Yeah, we really enjoy the relationship. Dr. Hillman was out, just I think just a couple of months ago, visiting with us. I think the pandemic year particularly, and go for his contract renewal process is highlighted for us just how important that relationship is. We feel really supported, and also we feel that our mission is honored. You know, we provide a public school choice for residents in the area, and we do a few things that are different within our mission, and it's supported and celebrated by the school, by the district. And one of the most exciting things for me this evening was Dr. Hillman listening to your recognitions at the beginning of the meeting, and you know, I had one or two Prairie Creek alums pop up in your list, and that's really just testimony to the relationship we have that our elementary school students often continue on to shine in other local area schools, and we stay connected that way.
Thanks, Simon. So again, no action this evening, but we're, you know, presenting you the contract so that you have it, and so the public has it. We'll step forward to ask the Minnesota Department of Education for any review and comment that they have, and then we will bring it back to you for approval, hopefully at the next meeting, but it is possible it could be a meeting after that. So we want to execute this and get this moving, so we would certainly be happy to take any questions you might have.
Board members' questions. Amy.
So I just want to confirm that the contract is essentially the same as it was before. There's no major changes other than updating the goals.
Right there. Essentially, it is a very similar contract to what it was for the past five years. Again, there are things that have been updated for the purposes of dates and updated goals and things like that, but Simon, is there anything else you want to add to that, that, I mean, the contract is essentially the same?
It is essentially the same, yeah.
Great. Well, I'm a fan of Prairie Creek, having sent my daughter there for six years, and it was great when she was there, and it's gotten better since she left. I don't think there's a causal relationship, but sounds good. Thank you.
Great question. Thank you, Amy. Other questions, comments?
Well, I have to agree with, with Amy. I honestly, you know, we know MDE, and we know that they look at things oftentimes differently than we maybe do, but what an incredibly strong application and one that, you know, I can can say I wholeheartedly support. You know, it just reflects a strong academic performance against Northfield Schools and your peer charter school. We wholeheartedly embrace choice for our students. We know that's a good thing. And your excellent financial stewardship with a 33% fund balance. That's just excellent. And, you know, the innovative professional development you continue to do and the collaboration you have with the district, namely the the work with our elementary students on your, with your work on dyslexia. So it's in our view, of course, a very strong application, so we'll be looking forward maybe to what MDE maybe has to say, and it will be interesting to see what, what, if any, challenges they bring back. Thank you, Simon, for being here.
Hey, thank you for having me.
Have a good night, Simon. Thanks for coming.
Great. Appreciate it. Have a good rest of your meeting.
Okay, so we will wait for, we'll submit that to MDE and wait for, it is nice. They're kind of giving it a once-over so that then we will certainly make the June 30th deadline. So that's excellent. Thank you. Okay. So we will move on to our next presentation, which is our child nutrition budget. We welcome Stephanie Strummy, Director of Child Nutrition, and I was reflecting that the last time Stephanie was here was February of 2020, and boy, things sure changed when she did her presentation to us last February. So welcome, Stephanie.
All right. Hello. Thank you for inviting me to come in and speak with all of you this evening, and on behalf of the Child Nutrition Department, I thank you from them as well. I would also like to welcome Cory and Claudia to the school board. I haven't been able to officially do that yet. School year 2021 has been a year of unimaginable meal service challenges. Gone are the days when I complained to Matt and Val about losing meal participation over just a few snow days. As the school year started, we all were facing many uncertainties. As we faced these uncertainties, one thing we always kept in mind was how we were going to continue serving quality nutritious meals to our students while remaining fiscally responsible and still meeting the USDA meal program requirements. As part of Northfield School's strategic plan and beliefs, the Child Nutrition Department shares responsibility and understands the importance of partnering together to create a world-class learning environment. By providing quality nutritious meals that support the growth and development of our students to feel their learning, we will have helped partner in creating a positive learning environment for our students, no matter what learning model they are participating in. This is a photo of the new Sibley kitchen, which we're so excited to have, our cafeteria. And as you can see, the students here are all sitting on one side of the table in their little cohorts, and I'll kind of explain some of our meal service programs that we had to do this school year based on the pandemic and the requirements we needed to follow. We're excited to have this opportunity to share what the Child Nutrition Department has done over the past year. Typically, in my presentations, I like to include photos of the students. This year, I really wanted to emphasize the hard work, flexibility, and positive attitudes that the Child Nutrition Department and staff have had as they pivoted from one food service model to another. Sometimes we were just getting comfortable with the routine and then needing to switch up the plan. Since last spring, we have distributed meals out of school buses, curbside pickup locations, after-school pickup for hybrid learners, and in-school feeding. In the next several slides, you'll see photos of Northfield Child Nutrition in action. Beginning March 18th of 2020 through the end of May, we served a total of 85,777 meals. This included both breakfast and lunches from our schools and the YMCA. This included Tier One childcare that was at Bridgewater and the YMCA. In May, due to the construction at Old Greenville Park, we began partnering with Benjamin Bus and moved our pickup to Emmaus Church. In June, we added four bus routes with a total of 12 stops in addition in addition to Emmaus Church and Northfield High School. These sites were around the community. We made sure we hit kind of the north part of town, the south part of town, east-west in town. So we had those 12 total stops. During the summer months, we served almost 65,000 meals. From last year mid-March, when the pandemic started, through the summer, we served approximately 150,000 total meals to our community children, helping to support local families. Here are some photos of the staff as they were loading up for the buses, the meals that they would have to take out and distribute during the summer months and the spring months. One of the greatest positive outcomes from the pandemic has been that staff were able to work together at the buildings. Many of them have said before this, they never had the opportunity to work with somebody from another kitchen, and it really helped to foster relationships with each other. We were also able to build and foster relationships with the community and district partners such as the Northfield Police Department, Benjamin Bus, Growing Up Healthy, HCI, and the NCRZ. There were always district staff who were willing to jump in and help as needed as we navigated through all of these new challenges. When we changed to distance learning, we had to readjust our staffing needs. Several of the child nutrition staff volunteered to work their hours with the mandatory Tier One childcare program. It was a great way to build and foster relationships yet again across the district. We also had fun coming up with innovative, cost-effective ideas on how to send out meals that could be served simply or easily reheated, keeping in mind our youngest learners and their ability to prepare meals or any barriers that students might have when preparing meals. We offered a cold ham and cheese sandwich, for instance, that could be reheated into a hot ham and cheese. Chicken teriyaki bowls or meal kits such as nacho pizza or wraps that included sides of veggies that could be added to the meal or eaten separately. In the next few slides, I will review some of our meal participation data from the 2021 school year. Our free meal program was extended through the end of the school year as provided by the United States Department of Agriculture. All students enrolled in the district, regardless of the learning model, received free breakfast and lunch every day. And again, this you can see, here's the middle school on the left, the picture, and how students are spaced out during mealtime. And then this is Bridgewater. We extended student meal tables out into the hallways so that they would have the correct spacing and social distancing. This slide represents approximately how many meals were served through March 31st at each level of our schools, comparing school year 2020 and 2021. New data from the USDA reveals that despite waivers that allowed schools to offer free meals to all students, school meal programs served at least 30% fewer meals to students and incurred significant losses in federal revenue in the first nine months of COVID-19 pandemic. An analysis of newly released data shows that between March and November 2020, schools nationwide served 1.7 billion fewer meals compared to the same timeframe in 2019, equating to a $2.1 billion loss in federal revenue for school meal programs. We know that breakfast has been proven to positively affect learning in children in terms of behavior, cognitive, and school performance. Offering breakfast for all Northfield School students ensures that every student can be ready to learn. can be ready to learn every day. Data collected through March 31st, 2021 shows that so far this school year, we have served just over 80,000 breakfasts, which was an increase in breakfast meals by about 26% from last school year during the same time, time period. This increase is due to breakfast for all students that were free and the addition of breakfast in the classroom for grades K to five at Greenville Park and Sibley. Reimbursement of breakfast is higher with the Summer Food Service Program, which is the USDA Meal Program we have been following during the pandemic versus the School Breakfast Program, which is the program we would typically follow in a normal school year. This increased participation, along with the additional reimbursement for breakfast, has helped to offset our revenue loss from decrease in lunch participation. As you can see, breakfast that we've served through March 31st of this school year is actually greater or just about meeting what our total breakfast served was in school year 19. So we thought that was a pretty exciting number to see. As of March 31st, 2021, we were at approximately 71% of possible meal participation days. Data collected through March 31st, 2021 shows that so far this school year, we have served over 151,000 lunches, which was a decrease, a significant decrease in lunch meals by approximately 49.8% from last school year. One of the main contributors to this is that during this time period, the middle school and high school students spent a majority of their time in hybrid learning or distance learning in a combination with elementary students going into distance learning. We tried to offset this decrease in participation by offering meal pickup programs to students for their hybrid distant learning days. We have also averaged 75 to 100 student meals picked up by the Portage Program students. The Portage Meal Pickup Program is offered every Wednesday and provides five days' worth of breakfasts and five days' worth of lunches for students who choose to participate. Reimbursement of lunch is higher with the Summer Food Service Program, which again is the USDA Meal Program we are currently following during the pandemic versus the School Lunch Program, which we would follow in a typical school year. This increased reimbursement for lunch has helped to offset our revenue loss from the decrease in lunch participation. This slide shows Greenville Park. So the new kitchen that we have there, which again, we are super excited about. We love the natural light, as you can see, coming in, the sun shining. Elementary meal service up until March 29th has been served at the tables. Beginning March 29th, we began to transition back to elementary students going through the line, keeping pods or cohorts of students together and continuing with assigned table seating for contact tracing purposes, um, improving upon the quality of the food, normalcy for the students, training for next year and modeling systems at the new schools and cafeterias. This also has given us the opportunity to utilize the kitchen equipment that we have in our new kitchens so that we can determine if there's any problems that occur with those equipment, um, before our warranty time runs out. We had to shift to a lot of prepackaged salads and served foods. These are just a few photos of some of those salads, but a lot of our fruits, maybe our canned fruits and stuff, rather than students going through the line, being able to serve themselves, we had to put in containers and serve them, um, or have us just serve them their meals. This is a photo of Portage and Distance Learning at the high school. So you can see kind of all the staff are bundled up. This was, I think, a cold fall day that they were out there or a cool fall day all bundled up. Even through the pandemic, we continued to work with local farmers in an effort to support our farm-to-school program. This year, we received a Mini Bites Farm-to-School Grant in the amount of $5,000. Through this grant, we purchased apples from Fireside Apple Orchard and turkey from Ferndale Farms. We created a go meal for our curbside meals that included homemade apple crisp and Ferndale turkey with mashed potatoes. Because of the grant funds, we were able to provide this meal with a food cost of about 53 cents per meal. Labor was approximately 78 cents per meal with a total cost of $1.31. This allowed for about $2.84 of meal reimbursement over expenses. Now I'd like to move on to, um, the proposed 2021 budget. Due to so many uncertainties during this school year, it was difficult to forecast revenue and expenditure assumptions for the 2021-22 school year. As we anticipate another year of uncertainty and unpredictability, it felt more like throwing darts or money darts at a dartboard as we evaluated our budget for the next school year. Some revenue assumptions. Revenue for the school year 21-22 was calculated using data from the 2020-21 adopted budget. At this time, we do not know what the state or federal reimbursement rates will be or which USDA program we will be following. To be conservative, we are assuming that reimbursement rates will remain flat. It is our goal to provide quality nutritious affordable meals for all students to support their growth and development to fuel learning potential, but also understand as a business operation, the need to remain fiscally responsible. Our financial projections indicate that there is a need to increase meal prices to adjust for inflationary costs. We are proposing an increase in our breakfast meal prices from $1.70 to $1.75 for students and $2.20 to $2.25 for adults. Additionally, we are proposing an increase in our lunch prices from $2.65 to $2.70 for elementary students, $2.80 to $2.85 for secondary students and $4 to $4.25 for adults. Our goal will be to have minimal consistent impact rather than larger lump sum changes to help decrease the financial burden on families who must pay for meals. We want to ensure we are in a place that we continue to make incremental changes and feel that families can be more planful for this type of meal increase. The proposed budget revenue for school year 2021-22 is $2,208,619. Some expenditure assumptions. In addition to the loss of meal participation, we had a significant loss in revenue because we were unable to provide à la carte purchases in the normal fashion due to the safety restrictions, while at the same time saw an increase in food labor and food costs due to supply chain disruptions and a high demand for meal packaging. After consulting with our food vendors regarding the expected market for the 21-22 school year, we're assuming a 6% food cost increase. Last year, when calculating our salaries and benefits, we did a rolled projection. This year, we budgeted using actual staffing hours and rates to get more accurate data. Due to lower meal participation directly related to the pandemic and the above-mentioned expenses, we expect to have an additional spend down in our fund balance for the 2022 school year that will put us well below the three months' operating expenses. The proposed budget expenditures for school year 2021-22 are $2,416,599. We will consistently demonstrate good stewardship by analyzing information, prioritizing needs and managing our financial, physical and human resources to support our mission. We propose that in school year 2021-22 budget with the total revenue, as I mentioned in the previous slides, of $2,208,618 and expenditures of $2,416,599. We are projecting to end fiscal year 22 with a fund balance of $75,971. The fund balance maximum for the school year 2021-22 should not exceed $805,533. While MDE sets a maximum fund balance for our department goal is really to work towards maintaining 16% of expenditures to be consistent with other funds across the district. For 2021 school years, our proposed budget is projected to be less than this. Why? This, we are monitoring this year closely. The 16% of our expenditures would approximately be $386,655 for a fund balance more consistent with the district goals. Due to the pandemic, it has been challenging to assess where the program is currently at and to project revenue and expenses moving forward. We will continue to monitor our revenue and expenses for the remainder of the school year. Based on the results of the 2021 school year and any rate changes provided by the state or federal government, we would bring a revised budget in the late fall once we have some, um, more participation statistics or more accurate numbers. I would like to take this time to publicly thank all of my staff for the amazing job they do every day. I know each one of them love the impact they have on creating a positive learning environment for our students. We're ready to face the challenges that come next. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Excellent report. So, board members, questions, comments for Stephanie? Amy?
I have a couple of questions, Stephanie. Um, my first question is, uh, how did the money that we received from the federal government, how is that reflected in the revenue summary for this year? Is that under local sources or?
So there, there wasn't a specific additional revenue from the federal government. So what happened with her fund was essentially, we're quoting it slightly differently in the system, but the, the sources look relatively similar. We didn't revise her budget for this year, so that's why it doesn't look different. But at the end of the year, the actuals will show much heavier in federal revenue than in local. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and same with state, dude. Didn't we get a lot more revenue from the state for the program or no?
No, it was pretty much all from the federal.
All right, great. Um, then my second question is, you know, you reported on how you've changed the breakfast, um, program with the free breakfast for everyone. And I'm wondering if you had thought about for future years, whether it would make sense to somehow try to provide more breakfast or just what you've learned from this last year as far as breakfast goes?
Yep, it is something that we are going to look at moving forward to see if it's an opportunity. You know, this year with breakfast being free for everyone, um, we see a lot more people. I think this year, we didn't do the snack cart, which we typically do at the elementary level. But because of the free breakfast, more people were participating in that. And we didn't want to have the snack cart program just because of, you know, students coming down and grabbing out of there and just, um, safety protocols because of the pandemic. So I think it's definitely something that we're planning and looking at moving forward. You know, there's a lot involved in it because it also, it doesn't just impact us. It impacts custodial services because there's a lot more cleanup. It impacts the teachers and what, you know, the time that it takes away from them to be serving the meals and having it in the classrooms. So there's a lot of things that we would have to look at and evaluate before continuing that program, probably putting out an interest survey because if parents now have to pay, um, you know, a little over $2 or close to $2 for a breakfast, they may not be as interested in, um, participating in that when it's currently a free program.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Claudia?
Hi, Stephanie. Thanks for the welcome, by the way. I wanted to hear how the National School Lunch Program is different than the Summer Food Service Program? Are there different guidelines for the type of food or if, I mean, just a few minutes on that?
There are. I'm going to go back to my notes so that I get the correct, um, numbers for you with reimbursement. But while I'm looking for that, um, there, there are different guidelines in the amount of food served. The regular school lunch program and the school, uh, basically the school lunch program has it divided into grade levels. So it'd be K through five has certain nutrition parameters that we must follow. Then middle school has their set and then high school has their set of nutritional parameters. For the summer program, everybody receives the same amount of food. So it doesn't matter whether you're in kindergarten or whether, um, you're a senior in high school. It's the same amount of food that would be provided to them. And I know there have been questions that have come up as to, you know, well, why is my high schooler only receiving this much? And, you know, maybe my middle schooler is receiving the same amount. But that's because of the parameters and the requirements, um, through the Summer Food Service Program. As far as the reimbursement goes, there's also, because this year, a lot of waivers have been created by the USDA. Normally with summer food programs, the students would have to eat at onsite where they are dining. But they've signed waivers to kind of eliminate that congregate feeding so that parents are able to come, pick up the meals and bring them home. And that's something that wouldn't probably continue in a normal summer year. It will be continuing for this summer where students, um, our parents can come and pick up the meals for their students as we provide them. The differences in reimbursement, so the Summer Food Service Program for lunch, they get $4.31 per meal, whereas in the School Lunch Program, we get $3.70 for free or reduced meals. And then we get about 52 cents in reimbursement for a paid meal. And for breakfast, um, with the Summer Food Service Program, we get $2.46 per meal. And with the regular school breakfast program, we get $1.89 for free or reduced meals. We get $1.62 for kindergarten breakfast. And then we get 87 cents for each paid meal. And within that, it factors in, um, you know, that reimbursement is to help with all of our costs, our labor costs, our food costs, any additional costs that we have, um, for the program. Does that answer your question, Claudia?
Yes, thank you. That's a smart move. And I also wanted to compliment you on the lunches. How nice they looked for the distribution, just beautiful, beautifully packaged.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Tom?
Thanks, Stephanie, to you and your staff for the masterful, um, way you pulled this off with all the different meals and all the different modes of giving them out to the students. I know the community is most appreciative of that. I might a question or curiosity. For a long time, the, um, the fund balance was near the maximum. And that didn't happen just over, you know, over the course of one year. But is there any way to estimate if we get back to normal, how long? How many years before we can start to build up a balance again?
Val, I don't know if you want to? I'm moving. Um, so I would say a lot of that will depend on how this year plays out. So we, we didn't do a revised budget, which we could have because it, it does appear that, um, the child nutrition budget's coming in about 50% of what we budgeted. It was, uh, a great coincidence that we had to do the budget presentations early last year due to my, uh, impending leave. So everybody could get that done before we. A great coincidence that we had to do the budget presentations early last year due to my impending leave, so everybody could get that done before we. Shut down, but the. To date, it appears that she has, the child nutrition budget has broke even month over month, so we're optimistic. That it's going to end better, so assuming that that happens and it does end at least breaking even. Rather than spending down, I would say. The fund balance that that was built before was over probably a. Four-year period to get to that level, but. There have been some programmatic changes at buildings that have reduced her. Reduced the child nutrition meal counts, so there's less participation than there was before for a variety of reasons. And so that would, I think, my best guess today would be probably five or six years, it would take slightly longer just because there's less. Participation than there was. Prior when it was growing, if that makes sense, so I would say five years is probably a a rough guess. If I had to say it tonight, so.
Thank you.
Yep. Noel, you had a question?
Yes, excellent report. Excellent information, and there are a few reports that we hear that can affect the student health. The students' academics and the community's social impact. And you've hit all three, and thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thanks, Noel. Other questions, comments? Jeff?
Yes, Stephanie, thanks for the report, and you kind of went on like the old football analogy, all off audibles this year, calling the place in the line of scrimmage. So I'm sure you just didn't sign up for this when you didn't kind of know what was coming here, but I think. You know, you really kind of got a model in place now for, you know, food prep and food distribution that you can use for. You know, times of emergency and things that, who knows what's coming on down the line, but I think that it's a much better situation to be in and to know. That that you're able to get, you know, food out to people like that and get that prep, so that's a great accomplishment and just keep up the good work, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Cory?
Stephanie, thanks for the welcome and thank you for the report, and want to thank you for my children, they enjoyed going to the school all last spring and the summer to get lunch and. Gave them a reprieve from being home all the time. So thank you for putting that together, and thank you to your staff.
You're welcome, I will pass it on.
I think that's questions, comments, so yes, I mean, Stephanie, when you talked about having the opportunity to publicly thank your staff. Clearly, the board is very thrilled to have you before us so that we have the opportunity to thank you, and you're just extraordinary management. Of the finance and the logistics and everything that that it it just is incredible and and we are. So incredibly grateful to you and your staff for everything you did, and I think Tom was right in talking about the community, that's one piece I get out. And the community is asking, how are we feeding kids? And and the community really cares about that, so. I hope that if Sam Wilmus is listening, he'll pick that up in the Northfield News, because that is one piece that I know our community is is really concerned about. Our our kids being fed. Claudia kind of got at my, one of my questions is curious how USDA and the National. School Breakfast and Lunch Program sort of differ in terms of what they think the costs are and what what they should support, so. But the additional revenue is definitely important, and I, as you were talking about the six percent food increase this year. You know, last year was four percent and the previous year was three percent, so, you know, the the cost of food is increasing, yet I think the moderate. The modest, somewhat modest increase we're asking our families to pay is is, you know, they're getting great value. I I think there's no doubt there. One program that you had started, and I wasn't sure with COVID protocol. Now that we have students back at the Northfield Middle School. Where the students were able to donate food and milk for other students to snack throughout the day, which was just getting started when you were here last February. Obviously interrupted as things are coming back, is that something that may continue or? Is that just even sidelined now till maybe next fall?
It's something that we'd like to continue, but we're waiting to find out, you know, kind of what the guidelines are. We do see that some of the milk and stuff is set aside, students are used to doing that from last year. So it is set there, but we are not having it typically taken up, you know, to the classrooms and stuff like that. Because we're just bringing it kind of back in the kitchen and not utilizing that, we are able to. If we, like at the elementary schools, the sharing cart, it has reduced what we have been doing, but we do have some packaged things when it comes back to us. We are washing and sanitizing it, and that's something that we've always done before, but we've definitely decreased. The amount that we've done with the sharing carts, it's something that we want to bring back for sure. But it's just when the timing is right and we know it's the right thing to do.
Oh yeah, absolutely, totally understandable. The other area that you would typically touch on as well was, are you still purchasing through the co-op? Or has the new sort of federal dollars kind of not allowed for that? Maybe to occur, are we still participating in that co-op?
Are you meaning the? For like our food dis- distribution, like our large with I F D, formerly known as Indian Head, it's now I F D. So we do work with that co-op, that group, so there's about eight or nine school districts, so we are still with that. But I wasn't sure if you meant like the farmer's market co-op, because we were also purchasing through the. That group as well, and we did not purchase with them this fall, we just reduced the amount of vendors that we were using. But we have been in contact with them for next year.
Okay, excellent, yeah, I I know that you have really researched that and and have found significant benefits for. You know, working with those co-op, purchasing co-op, so just wanted to make sure you mentioned that because it's part of the great work that you. That you do, so again, I think the board is just incredibly grateful, the community's grateful, families, students, staff, everyone for the. For the work and again, extraordinary efforts and, you know, when you talk about taking the dart and hitting the bullseye, you. Your team did it, really, they they threw that dart and they hit financial stewardship and they hit collaboration and they just really supported. Each other and as a leader, you, you know, you were instrumental in making that all happen, so thank you.
Thank you.
Julie, would it be okay if I made a comment as well?
Absolutely, Val.
Thank you, so despite the projections, I just wanted to publicly commend Stephanie on her commitment to stewardship. As she noted, COVID nineteen has given many challenges to her budget. And she has tackled every single one of them with a commitment to stewardship and she's been diligent and thoughtful. And still committed to doing what she does best, and I just wanted to make sure that. I know the board's aware of it, but I wanted to make sure the community was aware of that, and we are. We will have the child nutrition budget go through the budget prioritization process that we're gonna do next fall, fall and winter. So we are, we are certainly aware of the the numbers and hopefully they'll look better at the end of the year than they do on paper right now. But I also want to point out that for three years, we were told that she had too much fund balance. And so we made a plan and the timing couldn't have been worse. But we are now well in compliance with the federal requirement. But we know that that's not what we're striving for, so I just wanted to make sure that she was publicly commended for for managing. Excellently in a really difficult time, so thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Okay, so we can move on now to our next item for discussion, which is our community services budget for twenty-one, twenty-two. And we welcome Director Erin Bailey. Hold on, I don't want to share this again, I just want to present it, sorry, guys. Can everyone see this, okay?
Yes, we can see it, Erin.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, thank you for having me here this evening to present. Both the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two preliminary budget for the Community Education Department, and then I also actually have. This fiscal year's revisions to share with you this evening as well. As just a reminder, these are the principles of community education. This is also the front cover of our summer brochure, which I'm hoping you have all received in your mailbox by now. Just a couple of things to, numbers to highlight from fiscal year two thousand nineteen, twenty. In that year, we served fifty-two thousand six hundred and fifty-seven children, youth and adults. Those are people who actually participated in a community education program. Fifty-three groups accessed a district facility, and that does not include anyone that is, that was in a district program pre-K. Through twelve or a community education program, though those fifty-three groups totaled six thousand three hundred and three. Our six hundred, six thousand three hundred and seventy-three hours of facility use. And at the Greenville Park Community School, we had one thousand sixty-two youth attend programming that's elementary through high school. And in addition, we had six hundred and thirty-three adults and community members participating in programming. And four hundred and sixty-nine volunteers donated two thousand six hundred and fifteen hours of service in a wide variety of program. I think it's especially too important to highlight those numbers because that was a shortened year, and so when we talk about the. Slightly over fifty-two thousand five hundred number, that was about twenty-five hundred more participants than the previous year. And we paused the majority of community education programming on March eighteenth last of last year. And did not resume programming until July first, and so why we did, of course. Have distance learning in preschool and we did, you know, online and virtual and dropped programs and driveways and things like that. We saw not, we were on pace to have significantly more participation last year than we'd had the previous year. Then, of course, just a reminder of what the Community Education Program components are. The Community Education Department has approximately two hundred and fifty employees, and this does not include. Organizations that we contract with for programming, these would be everywhere. From office staff to licensed teachers to part-time seasonal recreation positions. That make up the Community Education Department. And of course, as you know, and as we'll talk about as we get into the budget, the Community Education budget budget is the oh-four fund of the school district. And not part of the general funds budget. Here are additional programs that make up the Community Education Department. As in preparation and who has seen this budget so far is the Community Education Advisory Council. They certainly help guide the work of the Community Education Department and provide feedback on programming and budgeting decisions. That council meets ten times per year. Members are appointed to three-year terms, we have two student representatives on the board. We have a school board representative, Julie Pritchard is our school board representative, and so this is also Julie's second time getting to hear this budget presentation. And then we do have a representation from the City of Northfield Park and Recreation Advisory Board as well. I think what's fun to highlight on the screen that you're seeing now is kind of the growth we've had in the last year in community programs and partnerships. As we have moved into our new space at the Northfield Community Education Center, that, as you all know, has allowed us to. Continue our partnerships with the Northfield Healthy Community Initiative by having the early childhood navigators located onsite. And certainly help strengthen our partnership in the work we're doing for the Ready for Kindergarten Action Team. And then, of course, the Community Action Center is still in the process of finalizing their space in in our building. But have been doing numerous outreach work, we currently serve meals from the building and to pick up to-go meals every Tuesday. And then, of course, have regular food distributions from our site as well. So as was mentioned by Val and Stephanie in these previous budget. The the budget that I shared with you last February was completed pre-pandemic, so when you are looking at the budget revisions I'm showing here. And seeing a significant swing between what was adopted and what was revised. We need to, of course, just keep in mind that what I shared last February was prior to anything that, of course, that we then saw play out for the rest of this year. So as I mentioned before, we have, the Community Education Budget is the oh-four about, oh-four budget of the school district. Community Education Budget is actually made up of four funds, which you can see here, it's the General Community Education Fund. Which is things like gen- our main office work, recreation programming, driver's education. Adult and youth enrichment, youth development, and then our school age child program, Kid Ventures, and our Early Ventures Learning Center. ECFE is our ECFE program, our Early Childhood Family Education Programming, and then some slight home visiting dollars. The School Readiness Fund Balance includes our hand-in-hand preschool, bridges to kindergarten, and pathway one and two scholarships. And unreserved is actually our early childhood screening, it houses our early childhood screening. So as you can see, the most significant changes are taking place in general community education, and that is absolutely the impact of COVID. Nineteen primarily in our childcare settings, so. Our largest play out of that this year is in Kid Ventures. So Kid Ventures, in following all COVID nineteen guidance that's put out by the state. Meant that last summer, we had pods that were nine students to one staff. And this school year, we have operated in pods that are fifteen or fifteen total, so that would be fourteen students to one staff. We have this school year, two hundred and eleven kids enrolled in Kid Ventures. On a typical non-pandemic year, we have a four hundred and thirty-five kids enrolled in Kid Ventures. So why we've seen about a reduction of about half the number of kids, it actually takes us almost the same amount of staff to operate that program. And that's for a couple of reasons. Because we are not allowing parents or caregivers into the buildings this year, we are providing, Kid Ventures must provide a greeter. Before school and after school at the door that allows parents to drop off their child. And then our Kid Venture staff brings them into the programming site. Previously, parents were able to come into the building and then they would take their child right to wherever childcare was happening, so this staff member. Is not in ratio, so we have, it's not a staff member that is providing any service to children. But is a position we have to have at each building before and after school when care is provided. And then in addition with the the way we must be to follow the guidance. Historically, as children arrived in the morning or when they left from care in the evening, we would collapse groups, so we would start to send staff home. So that, you know, as less and less kids were on site, well, we have all children potted this year, of course, to reduce. The risk of any COVID spread, and so we, we keep staff until everyone at their pod is, has left for the day or when they arrive in the morning. So this means staff are working more hours because we are not mixing children as people are get picked up, so. Again, as I said, we. Kid Ventures has had a significant reduction in children participating this year, but not been able to have the same reduction in staff involved with that program. Early Ventures has somewhat of a a similar scenario that is taking place. We've also seen a reduction in child, students participating in childcare there, but again, cannot reduce staff at the same levels for. For the identical reasons, in Early Ventures, we used to have staff that would float among multiple classrooms, giving breaks to other staff members. Again, this year, we're not doing that, we have everybody, staff and children in pods. That we don't, don't rotate among and we don't change just for the safety of all staff and students involved. And so again, we can't reduce our staff. To be able to necessarily meet the number of kids that we would have there. We also, which we, I have talked about in previous budget presentations, we are seeing students who have some significant needs. That require. Additional staff support, and so we continue to work through how best to support these students in this childcare setting. In in our School Readiness Fund Balance, so in ECFE, you will see a slight increase in that fund balance. That is really, ECFE actually has probably seen the lowest, the the most significant reduction in participation this year, and that is not. Unique to ECFE in Northfield, that is actually ECFE across the states. We are just, due to the size of that program, able to be a little more nimble with staff, so we did not fill EA positions. And we also reduced staff hours based on what was the enrollment numbers that we had this year. In school readiness, we, of course, last. In school readiness, we, of course, last fiscal year when we. Did not operate in person, April, May or June. We continued to offer hand in hand preschool via distance learning, however, did not charge families for any of those three months worth of tuition. So. And that is certainly a start to what is the the decline that you will see in that fund balance. And then of this year, we also, of course, have lower enrollment there, especially lower enrollment among our general education students, which. Are are the fee paying students in that program. There again, I'm feeling a little bit like a broken record. To maintain pods and to maintain safety protocols for staff and students. We do have the same number of staff that operate in that program in order to be able to keep. Meet the guidance for keeping children and staff safe. And then. As you will see in our unreserved with is which is our early childhood screening and and an up increase in fund balance there. The state of Minnesota, because of the pandemic, in early childhood screening, you are paid per child that you screen. And you are paid based on the age that you screen them. So three that the goal is to screen at age three. So you are paid more per screening that you conducted for a three year old, slightly less for a four year old and slightly less for a five year old. The state made the determination to pay both this fiscal year. In in fact, it'll be three fiscal years and the end off the rate from the actually the rate from the fiscal year nineteen. That happened to be a great year of we screened a lot of children at age three. We've had a very large initiative to screen kids at age age three. Yes, it's a great financial position for us to be in. It's also great for kids and families. We are better able to catch and identify. Any concerns of children and have longer to. Time to address those concerns and work with our very talented staff around navigating what resources might best support that family. So. The we will be paid. We are we were paid last year, this year, and will be paid next year based on that rate. And of course, this past year, there have been periods of time where screening has been halted by the state. And so. We are in essence being paid, but not necessarily always able to complete all those screenings. I do say that and know that wants you to also know that means we do have to catch up on screening. So we are working hard to make sure we've got everyone's. Getting back into screening as they need to be getting screened. And of course, prioritizing those that would be closer to kindergarten entrance. But it will also cause a a likely increase in referrals to special education as we. See these students kind of go through screening that may have not appeared in the last year. Either due to the schedule availability for screening or due to family choices due to the pandemic. So as you can see, then that means my budget revisions are a shift and I am predicting a almost seventy thousand dollar loss at the end of this fiscal year. Our goal for the Community Education Budget has been pretty consistent for the last few years. And that is again, and it matches your board board goal. To have a fund balance that equals sixteen percent of our operating expenses. And of course, we want to achieve this with all the funds having positive balances. I think this is a good reflection of the Community Education Fund balance and important to see at this point in our time. What we are seeing happening in the Northfield Community Education Budget is actually not unique. But really is quite similar to all community education budgets throughout the state. As you'll see in the next slide, our budget is heavily dependent on fees. And so. When when you COVID nineteen has because of less enrollment and at times having no programming going on. That is, of course, had a dramatic impact on our revenue ability. So some of the assumptions as you are going to next see my budget for this upcoming fiscal year. Here, I just want you to be aware of the assumptions that I have made. So in the revenue, I am predicting slight increase in revenue fees. Based on our current activity, I'm not predicting a full return to programming yet. I don't. I I feel a little like Stephanie's bullseye is a little bit. It's hard to know exactly, but I don't know that we will be. Out of a pandemic as soon as July first hit hits in terms of where we are seeing everybody at. And then, of course, we are we, which we talked about at the budget last year, we talked about that we were implementing. An adjusted fee structure in kid ventures and early ventures. So we actually did implement that, but with with not probably true fidelity because of what the start of what last summer looked like in all childcare settings. And then what our enrollment has looked like this year. And that again, was just some shift about holding some. A hold fee for summer childcare in early ventures if you were not enrolled it going to be attending for the summer. Or having the option for attending a couple of days a week just to help stabilize. Our fee for needing to have care available for the school year months, but of course, us maintaining those staff positions throughout the school year. Then, of course, the continuation of pathway one and pathway two early learning scholarships. This was a renewal year for us for pathway two. Our application has was submitted about a month ago. So we are waiting to hear back. That is fifty two thousand, five hundred dollars. Worth of scholarship dollars for children's to children to attend hand in hand preschool. And then, of course, we have some grant applications out at this time. Some of the assumptions under the expenditures, of course, is the appropriate increases in salaries, wages and insurance. And of course, our licensed early childhood staff wages are determined by the NEA master agreement. As you all know, that is being negotiated at this time. So we have. Done our best prediction of that. This upcoming school year, we are offering in hand in hand preschool, a five day full day a week section, as you know. Moving to the Northfield Community Education Center, part of our plan was to grow. Our programs and be responsive to what we've heard in the community. And one of those things that we have heard repeatedly is that having. A full day section of preschool, which is is a needed component in Northfield. So we are, we do have that offered for this next year. And then, of course, I think the hardest thing to predict and probably the what has the largest impact on the community education budget of is the continuation of COVID nineteen guidance. In this budget, I have predicted we will be through that be in some guidance through the end of the calendar year. Of course, as I mentioned, this is the largest variable. This has the most significant impact on our programming because it impacts what how we are able to staff programs. How we move children within programs. And I think this will. How how we unfold out of a pandemic will again. Will need to be played out for us. And of course, we'll make those revisions next year as needed from from that. So our revenue sources come in multiple ways. There is state aid and levy dollars based on funding formulas established by the Minnesota State Legislature. This is why I will always advocate the importance of the census. The when these numbers are updated, that is what directly impacts the funding formulas that determine. Funding sources for the Community Education Department. Then, of course, as you can see, sixty eight percent of our budget is made up of participation fees. So that is obviously the very largest part of our budget. And then we have. Other small amount in grants, other local sources, and then, of course, the pathway one and to early learning scholarships. Just so every what is made up of other local sources is the payment from the City of Northfield for. The recreation programming for per the agreement we are in with them. It is things like the ads in our brochure. Sponsorship dollars for programming and any donations that we do receive. So then moving forward to the proposed for budget for. Fiscally, your twenty one, twenty two. As you can see, I am still projecting a negative fund balance. I and have mentioned that I that the cut the impact of COVID nineteen. Is not something we are going to be able to turn around immediately. And I and I should just also had. We did, we have made steps this year to ensure that we slowed our losses as much as we can. We did have one administrative assistant that works at the district office. When they in in the move for about a month and a half, supported the district offices, they. Started that main front office position. And then we had four coordinators that supported tier one. Childcare when we were in distance learning in November through mid January. And when those staff worked at other locations, we did code them to the general fund when they provided services that was general fund services. So. And then in addition, our youth or excuse me, our enrichment coordinator has moved to a part time position. So I I do just want to point out, we are. Trying to make adjustments in all areas that we can to in this current year, and we will continue to do that in the upcoming year. As we, as I was preparing this budget, I do. Anticipate a slower kind of return to normal for childcare. I think we are seeing. For kid ventures this summer, a a lower number at this point than we would typically have enrolled. I think this is a couple of reasons. I think. Many families are still working from home and they potentially know how much longer they'll be working from home. And they they have the ability to work from home this summer. Or they have determined their childcare at least through the next school year because they've had to have set that up at this point into the pandemic. They have kind of made those arrangements. So why we are actually seeing a uptick in our recreation and enrichment programming, it is our childcare sites that are still a little bit. We are starting to see an increase, but they are slower to come back than some of our other programming. As I mentioned, the brochure was came out on April second. I did a little analysis today of our first week of registration there. Versus our first week of registration in two thousand and nineteen to just reflect a non pandemic year. We are, we're actually up twenty five hundred dollars over registrations in two thousand and nineteen, which I know. Is not a significant amount, dollar amount, but it does say that we are on track for what would be a normal. Year of revenue generating for our summer programming, which is a large chunk of our year. So that is an area we are seeing now a pretty similar pattern to what would be a normal year. So that is encouraging. When you ask about, you know, how long may it take us to kind of turn this around or how long, what does this look like with a negative fund balance? I think that is partly why I show that graph of our fund balance history, because I think we have had points in the past. Where we have been negative and we've made corrections and turned that around in a. Within a year or two. I think that while it's hard to predict, like I said, how quickly things will come back after a pandemic. I am starting to see some hope of kind of return to a normal programming, especially in some of those areas that I mentioned. A negative impact of a negative community education balance does is a liability to the general fund after five years. And as I mentioned, and and Val can certainly add any other comments to, but we are making steps to correct this. And of course, the the biggest predictor, of course, is how quickly families will come back. And how long we'll have some of the COVID guidance that will be following. So then, of course, as I mentioned, here are the the largest variables. And now they've been said repeatedly, but actual program enrollments. Fee collection and then those actual COVID nineteen guidance and protocols. And I just, of course, want to take this moment to to think kind of all think all staff. Both in the Community Education Department and those that work in the Northfield Community Education Center. We have had some staff, especially those in childcare who have worked every day on site. With children and with families in a pandemic. And I I don't want that to go. Unnoticed or make sure we don't give them the respect they do because that they do deserve because. Not everyone had the option to work from home for all of this pandemic. And I think we want to, I wanted to make sure that they are recognized. And then, of course, I just want to reflect the Greenville Park Community School is part of. Programming that is delivered through the Community Education Department. However, it is a federal grant and federal funds have to be part of the general fund. So this is not reflected in the budget numbers I just showed you. But just wanted to share this funding here. We're yeah, we are in our second year of the cohort eight funding. Assuming we're meeting all our we, there's three years of initial funding and then assuming you're meeting all your goals, which. Have changed for every application that was funded, we will then be extended for three more years. We were the top rated funded application when that with when that happened about two years ago. So. I think we continue to be. Well respected in the work that we're doing here. And so we will continue to. Work with families to continue to offer programming. The pandemic has allowed us to open up our programming to other schools. And so we have. Most of this year offered all our programming, both virtual and in person to Sibley and. Bridgewater families as well, which has been really great. We've seen some great participation from families at those schools too. And it's great to share the opportunities we've had as well. And with that, I will take any questions or comments.
Excellent. Thank you, Erin. Questions, comments?
Erin, I just wanted to thank you and your staff for this year and everything you've done to keep this program going. Because I know it's been a crazy year for everybody and you have so many balls in the air that you juggle with community ed. And I think you've done a great job and your report is very clear. Excellent report. Thank you for letting us know how things are going.
Thanks, Amy.
Other questions, comments? Oh, Jeff, I'm sorry. I didn't see you here.
Yeah, thanks for your report. I'm just glad you get that new space up at Greenville just to spread out and appreciate that finally when everything kind of gets back to a little bit of normal. But. It's nice, nice to get that nice big space up there compared to what you had. That's for sure. So keep up the good work.
We are enjoying it immensely.
Yes, thank you, Erin. I mean, it it's so difficult and I'm so glad that you pointed out, you know, you. Last July, when you were offering, you know, rec community ed opportunities for the community, you were the first out in front. To try to get a handle on how how you could work with in the COVID protocols and the the childcare that. That your staff was doing and the challenges you were continually trying to navigate. So thank you so much. And I know. It must be incredibly disheartening to have to present a budget like this when you have worked harder than you have ever worked, but it is certainly understandable. And the community is grateful for everything that that your team was able to do. And so. I had a question. No, I guess I didn't. Oh, yes, I did have a question. Did we get some federal dollars to offset childcare? And would be there any more Esther dollars that might come through that can go to the community ed budget?
Why don't you go ahead? Yeah, I'll answer the federal. I'll let Val take the second half of that question. Is that fair, Val? So um, we do get, yes. So as part of the federal funding, we are being paid that is supporting. All most every childcare right now. So we do receive a monthly payment both for early ventures and for kid ventures. We know it. And that is again, just to support that childcare stay open because they know that it, I mean, childcare has closed at a large at a. High rate in this past year and they just and and the acknowledgement that when this pandemic is done, we need childcare to still be there too for people to be back at work. So we have, we are receiving a monthly payment. It started for early ventures last October and it started for kid ventures. In November, we have been told that we know they will continue through May. In truth, I would be a little surprised if they don't continue longer. I mean, we know through May for sure. We also know there's a lot of money in those stimulus packages for childcare and that this has been their avenue for distributing them. So I'm I'm hopeful Julie and others that those will continue beyond what we know is the main timeframe for right now.
Okay, thank you. And then any Esther dollars that might come through?
Yep. So we we've been working. So we did officially get our first. Allocation of the S R two. So we have that formal dollar amount. And we've been working to determine how we're going to allocate that. And we've identified probably about a hundred and twenty thousand. That we're going to reserve to help offset some of the childcare expenses. So hopefully that'll help certainly make a dent in it. The other federal payments are sort of a drop in a bucket, even though we're very grateful for them. It's a, it's a significant challenge. So. And I would. Echo everything that I said about Stephanie's management of the budget. I would say Aaron's, the Community Education Budget is probably the most difficult budget. For the district, just due to the the reliance on the enrollment. It makes it very difficult to project and react. And she's done a really great job. Again, it doesn't look wonderful, but. Again, it doesn't look wonderful, but we're doing all of the things that we can in the meantime. And this budget will again, go through that process next fall. And hopefully we'll, we'll get on the right track as things start to normalize and but that's where we're at. We're hopeful that the SR3 will have some additional funding as well, but we don't have that formal dollar amount yet. So we're just waiting to get that dollar amount and the actual approval and how we can spend it before we make any promises on that one.
Sure. Cause S3 should be significantly more than two. So that'll be good. And Erin, I did also, I just, I brought my community ed brochure that I got in the mail. And I was so happy that you did pull some preliminary numbers, because that was my question is what is the reaction been? And you saw how there was a need last summer and that parents and community responded. So I would have imagined that there is equally if seemingly more excited to be able to see some programs come back. So again, you have been, you know, kind of the bellwether for us and you, you dipped your toe in a water last July and, and was out there really leading, leading the way for the district to come back. You know, in the fall. So thank you for everything. And I appreciate that Val made those comments as well. Because we again, like Stephanie, are really thrilled you're here so that we can publicly thank you for an incredible year. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So now we can go on to our next item for discussion, which is legislative update. Always interesting to start talking legislature, continue to talk as they progress through the session. Just a reminder, in the table file, there was the Senate and House bill summary that came through today from Schools for Equity and Education, which is, helps us to kind of see where, where we're at in the session. So Dr. Homan.
Yeah. So I'll just begin the legislative summary and then invite Legislative Action Committee members to participate as well. So wanted to start off by what the, what I've shared with you in the packet that I shared last Thursday as a printout of Brad Lundell's blog. And so Brad Lundell is the Executive Director of the Schools for Equity and Education. We are a partner in that group. And Brad really gives some excellent updates through his blog about what's actually happening right now at the Capitol. And what I'd like to point out is, I think the important part that we have in here is the comparison of the two chambers of bills for education finance. And I think what we can call this is a tale of two cities. So in one bill, in the House bill, we have a 2% increase to the basic formula within legislative proposal where they would link the formula to inflation moving forward. This is something we have long advocated for, so that we could have some measure of predictability in terms of our budgeting from a revenue perspective. I'd also like to point out in the House, something that's in the House bill that does not appear to be in the Senate bill as of yet, which is the ability for school districts to renew existing voter-approved levies at the same previous level, but by board approval, as opposed to having, going back to the voter. So the concept is, once the voters were to approve an operating levy, as long as the board were not to go above what the voters had approved, they could extend the levy when it would expire. What you'll see in SF 960, the Senate version is no increase to the basic formula at all. So a 0% proposal. And the small, much smaller Senate budget really focuses on a lot of grants and other kinds of things, including some cuts as part of that to statewide agencies. So really that's what I wanted to really focus on tonight is that we know that for us, one of the biggest pieces of the legislative session is what is the investment on the basic formula? Because that of course lifts all boats across the entire state. And so we have two very different proposals. Now, as we move forward, we know there'll be conference committee. We know that there will be other work that will be done and we'll need to pay close attention to that as well. The reason I included the side-by-side in the table file is I find the side-by-side to be very instructive. Because when we take a look at the bills in both chambers, we have an opportunity to see where each chamber is at. Now, sometimes they're very similar. Other times there's some nuanced differences and other times bill is about the same thing can be very different. Also, when you see a bill that is in one chamber, but not the other, we know that there's probably a limited opportunity that, that that ends up becoming law this session. So we have a long way to go. It, it feels like it's only about a month or so until they're supposed to adjourn the session. But we know we have a long way to go in that month in terms of seeing what the actual budget proposal ends up being and what, what comes out of the conference committee to the governor. So I, that was the update I want to provide you, provide with you. And if Claudia, Corey or Julie want to offer any other items here from our Legislative Action Committee, I'd eagerly ask them to do so at this time.
Claudia or Corey?
Um, the only thing I, I, I was interested, we've, every Friday, the Minnesota School Board Association does a Friday chat room. And it's been incredibly informative. Denise Dietrich runs the, the chat room and just really kind of goes through where the legislature is at. And it was interesting because the, the House came out with quite a large education target of 700 million, which was actually 700 and something million dollars, which is a little bit more than what the governor had, had proposed for education. And the Senate came in woefully short of that, around 152 million. So having her experience and, and possibly trying to leave, read tea leaves. So those bills went to ways and means and taxes and they will come out. And then those bills will pass on the floor and then they will get the conferees to get together to, to match up same, similars. And where there's a divergent view on, on a bill. What she, Denise's wisdom feels that the education target that will be given to the House and Senate conferees will be around 450 million. So whether or not there's more that, than that or less, but we know that two and two on the formula is 400 million dollars. So I think probably, as Dr. Hillman said, our mantra is, it always is, of course, is money on the formula. And if we can get the two and 2%, and depending on Chair Davney, if he can do anything with inflation, that would be really good. But there's, there's just a lot of, of things that of course we would like to see. We'll be disappointed of a $450 million target that just really barely covers inflation for school districts. So I think there's some thinking at the state level, which I could understand seeing the amount of federal dollars that are coming to school districts, thinking, oh, they're flush with cash because the American Rescue Plan gave them lots of money. And we just saw the community education budget where if we get some S or two, S or three dollars, isn't going to offset where we're at and nor is it going to offset shortfall in the general fund either. So there's some work that we'll have to do with conferees and then hopefully come together for a final omnibus bill. I believe there's anybody's guess whether they will end as planned on May 17th or if we'll go to special session, which would somehow probably reconvene in the summer. So we could have many, many weeks ahead of us. But right now, we'll just hope that they come out of each of those committees and that we get an education target high enough that can give us the funding that we need.
I'd like to add one more piece based on what you said, Julie, is that, so we want to acknowledge, and as Val said, we are very grateful for every dollar that we have gotten in the, that we have gotten so far in the two stimulus packages and what we're anticipating that we're going to get. And I, and a little bit later, I'll share a little bit about some thoughts about S or three. But I think what's really important for the community to understand is that the federal dollars are about stabilization. Let's take child nutrition and community services. The historical budgetary process there has been one of quality fund balance. Great programming, making sure that they have a quality fund balance for a rainy day. It's pouring, right? And so thankfully we had those fund balances to offset and we are still concerned. The federal dollars are about stabilization and about trying to address the drastic needs that we're going to have to address across this country for our learners post-pandemic. When we come out of this, we are going to work on learner acceleration. That is what those dollars are for. The basic formula is about the future, right? And it's about our ongoing budget plan. All of the Esther dollars are one-time money, right? We will approach it with a mix of how do we accelerate the, our learners abilities over the next couple of years? Not going to use the term to gain back what they lost, because I'm not going to get into that right now. But we're going to work to help accelerate learning. That is not about the long-term budget stable. Those are one-time dollars. The budget or the basic formula is about the future. And while I certainly respect and understand in difficult financial times where the legislature may look at the American Rescue Plan and the three S R stimulus packages as saying, we don't need to continue to support schools. I would remind them of their constitutional responsibility. The federal government came in to rescue the situation because of a once-in-a-century public health disaster. The state still has a responsibility to make sure that we are prepared to embrace a future. And I do believe that we are going to have a, a very positive and a very bright future coming out of the pandemic. We've all learned so much, but we cannot say, oh, the federal government gave schools money. Because while Northfield is fairly lucky, the way that the distribution occurred, many districts did not get nearly the amount as other districts, because it's based upon your Title I distribution. So I think we just need to really emphasize with our legislators, the federal dollars are about stabilization. The basic formula is about the future. And we have to, at some point, we're going to have to stop being satisfied with 2%. I, I will spare you all my lecture on the general, the basic fund deficit. For now.
All right. Well, thank you. We can move on now to policy committee recommendations. There are three policies that we will review. There were a total of six that the policy committee reviewed. Three had no substantive changes. So Dr. Hillman.
Yes, we have three policies for you tonight, two that we're asking you to move forward with some changes. And one, which we're going to ask you to sunset. So when we look at policy, we don't, we don't always just look at what we want to change. We ask, is this policy something that is still necessary? First policy, 430 is around the recruitment and selection of employees. You'll see that there are some changes simply to align it with the remainder of the district's template that you're seeing that we're using. We're trying to use a similar style and format with every policy. So that's something that we are working on. And also you will see in the general statement of policy that we are putting it into the recruitment and selection of employees policy about our desire to have our faculty better reflect our student body. And so really trying to prioritize applicants who have experience supporting a diverse population of learners. That's policy 430. Policy 436 is an update to our licensed teaching staff performance evaluation process. And again, really intended just to bring it up to date with how we are looking at that for this time period. And then finally, policy 439, this policy we're recommending that you discontinue. It is a policy that talks about summer school teachers being recruited from a regular licensed teaching staff first. And we have not had a problem with this in some time. We will typically go right to our staff. That's what we're looking for. And we usually have good success in getting our staff to participate, but also there are times where we might need to be go beyond our regular teaching staff. We think this is a holdover from a previous time when it was summer school jobs maybe weren't as plentiful. Of course, we have so many new summer programs where basically if you want to work in the summer, we're going to have a role for you. So those are the three from this evening.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments on the first reading of these revisions and one sunset to total of three policies? Claudia?
On policy 439, Matt, you're pretty sure that it's not tied to teacher contract, union wording? Pretty sure it's just a holdover from a time when there weren't a lot of positions.
If it's, it's something that we have, uh, shared this with the Teachers Association, asked for their feedback on it. And so it is something that we believe we are able to sunset. And if there is continued pieces around what would need to be in the teacher contract, that is our, would already be in the teacher contract. I'll have to go back and look at that language specifically. But we believe it's acceptable to sunset this policy at this time.
Other questions, comments?
I have a question about policy 430 recruitment and selection of employees. I think this is such a great example of the amazing work that the policy committee is doing. So the last update was 2015, so seven years ago. And I, I have really appreciate under heading to number two, these procedures sell include prioritizing applicants who have experience supporting a diverse population of learners. I think that's excellent. My question is, if you look at 430 procedure, which you're alluding to here in the purpose, it's rather brief. It was last updated in 2016. Do you see then a need to address a little bit more with the procedure in order to be able to, you know, work within that, that tenet of the policy and, and trying to prioritize certain applicants?
Uh, yes. And so, you know, after the board adopts policy, the administration will then take an update, either create or update procedures as necessary. So we routinely look at procedures. It's been about five years since we've looked at those procedures. But what we will do is we'll work with our principals, we'll work with our human resources department to create the set of procedures to make sure that we have the, the protocols that we use when hiring staff to be in alignment with this general statement of policy.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. So we, we will then look to approve policy 430 and 436 changes as well as voting on the sunset of policy 439 at our April 26th board meeting. Okay. Our next item is always COVID-19 response and operations update. Dr. Hillman?
Yes. And before I begin my regular report this evening, I'd be remiss if we did not take a moment this evening to acknowledge the tragic death of Dante Wright, a black motorist shot by Brooklyn Center Police yesterday. It's something that's happening in our state. We pay attention to what's happening in our state. We acknowledge this tragic death. And I also think it's important for us to acknowledge the continued anger and agony of our black community as they experience the deep pain of another death connected with law enforcement. And we mourn Mr. Wright's death. And we pledge as a school district to continue to do our part that we've been working so hard on to create an equitable and just community. So we are part of a larger system here in Minnesota. And we need to acknowledge this very painful death that our state is working through yet again. So I'm going to move on to our COVID operations update and talk about our learning model selection. And so I want to start off with that we came back to the in-person learning model for middle school, high school and ALC students on March 31st. And what I want to go back to always is just making sure we revisit the why. So why did we make a change back to the in-person learning model for middle school, high school and area learning center students? First, let's be really clear. For most of the year, our elementary students have been in person, right? So our kindergarten through fifth grade students have been going to school in person for much of the years, as have our early learners at the Northfield Community Education Center. There was a period of time, of course, between November and February, November and January where they did distance learning. But we felt it was important to go back to in-person learning for three reasons for six through 12th grade students. And first, we've pledged that we would follow the guidance of the Minnesota Departments of Health and Education. And so in mid-February, Governor Walz announced changes to the safe learning plan. Most notably, the change from a required six feet distance between students in a hybrid learning model to where you could have students be three feet apart. That allowed us to bring more students onto campus. And so that was the most important piece. Another part of that is it eliminated the need to use the county infection rate per 10,000 residents as one of the main driving factors for the learning model decision. The second reason is the hybrid model as reasonable of an option as it was, given the circumstances. I want to compliment our staff who did an excellent job of, of working this new learning model this school year. But we also know that it did not meet, meet the needs of a significant number of students. We had concerns raised about the numbers of Ds and Fs at the middle school, high school and ALC. And we want to make sure that we acknowledge that, that we worked really hard, but we also know it was very hard for lots of learners. And then the final reason we felt we could look to move back is one of the key variables that we have dealt with all year has been staffing. And with our entire staff, thanks to a partnership with Northfield Hospital and Clinics, with Rice County Public Health, we have been able to get a proc, we anticipate approximately 90% of our staff have chosen vaccination. Everyone's been offered vaccination multiple times, but we now know that everyone who wanted it has had the opportunity for vaccination. Now only did they have Not only did they have both shots, but we also had approximately nearly 14 days after the second shot for everyone, really providing us with more stability in our staffing. So anytime that we make a learning model change, there are going to be difficulties. There was a sense of excitement with kids being back in the building and a, and a nearly full complement saved those who have chosen portage for the first time in one year. And coincidentally, it was on March 31st, 2020 that we started distance learning. So one year later, March 31st, 2021 was when we brought students back to the in-person model. So lots of energy, but there are also going to be difficulties with the return. And so with the difficulties with the return, it's about getting back into the swing of things. And we have to be straightforward. We have had a year of where we have worked very hard to limit how many people we've seen, right? And how close people are together. And when we come back in person like that, it can be overwhelming for some people. I had that first experience at a school event in January where it was the first time I had been with quite a few people. And boy, it hits you the first time. So we absolutely understand that. And our middle school and high school administrations did some really good work to try to prepare students. By way of example, the middle school administration did a couple of webinars for students where they could ask questions about what's it going to be like? How, you know, what can I expect? You know, understand the adolescent mind and what they wanted to do to prepare. So good preparation. People worked hard. And then as we come back, we did see, as expected, you bring more people back. You, we do expect to see an increase in cases. And we didn't expect to see some rise in quarantine because one of the key things that is disparate is while the state and the CDC have talked about the safety of moving from six feet to three feet, they have remained the contact tracing at six feet. So we have students closer together. If there's a positive case, that means people within six feet, which are typically the people who are about within three feet of you are going to need to quarantine as a close contact. So right away, we came back, we did see a number of cases right off the bat at the high school. Less so at the middle school. In fact, we just saw our first cases since in-person learning started at the middle school over the weekend. And so we had this rise in cases right away, which of course adds some additional anxiety. So we want to acknowledge that. We want to, to know that we know that that is a significant point of concern for a number of people. So we want to go back to the data then, right? When we feel this way, we go back to the data. In your packet, I had shared with you a chart. So not only are we looking at the number of positive cases, we are also looking at what's called the influenza-like illness rate. This is a key metric for the Department of Health. And so the Department of Health wants us to start having a conversation about a different learning model when we hit 5% on average over about a week of students who are out of school, absent because they have influenza-like symptoms, which would include COVID-19-like symptoms. We also need to put, pay attention to the number of students or the percentage of students who are quarantined. And I think it's important to put that number in context. So I gave you a snapshot, but I gave you in your packet was a snapshot of the end of the day on Wednesday, April 7th. To be clear, the area learning center is they, they have had, they have got zero active cases. They've only had two cases the whole year. And they're calculating their rates in a slightly different way because it's a much smaller population than the other schools. So that's why there's nothing reported there. So you can see the rates. I want to share with you how quickly things can change. So as of today, at the end of the day, we were down to 1.27% of Northfield High School students absent due to influenza-like illness. So a pretty significant reduction over the last several days. And back down to 5.97% of students quarantined because when students are quarantined, they have a 10-day quarantine. And they will come back at the end of those 10 days. And so we had some students already back to actually two groups of students back today who had previously been quarantined. We are now up to a total of 13 active cases at Northfield High School. But tomorrow, four of those cases will come off. And so if we get through the end of the day tomorrow without any additional cases, we'll be back down to nine. At the middle school, which again had had zero cases, new cases up until this weekend, they went up just a little bit to 1.42% of students who were home with influenza-like illnesses. And at 5.2%, 5.24% of students quarantined. And so I share that with you that we are using this with our incident command team. We are constantly communicating with Rice County Public Health and the Minnesota Department of Health. We had, of course, as you would imagine, when we had some concerns, we talked with Rice County Public Health, who gave us a very clear director, very clear recommendation that looking at our data, they felt that the appropriate piece was to continue with our learning model. So we're going to continue right now with the in-person learning model. We are prepared to shift if we have to. I think the big difference as you look at the second page as well, you look at the graph of the Rice County infections per 10,000 residents, while it's not a central data point anymore, we are continuing to pay attention to it. I think the difference between now and late October, November, when we started to see an increase, week over week increase of cases. At that point, we did not have on-demand testing. In late October, early, we still did not have on-demand testing. We now have on-demand testing. Anyone who needs a test can get a test and can, can get it very fairly quickly. We have tests at each of our schools that if a family can't get to a community testing site, we can provide them one free of charge or something the district purchased with our Esser dollars. We also know that vaccination continues to ramp up. And it is very clear that the state's approach to dealing with the variants, which we know are here, we know they are in Rice County. We know the approach is we're going to outrun the variants through vaccination. So we have really been working very hard to let people know about where can you get vaccinated? We've shared links. We know that we have had a number of 16 and 17-year-old students just in the past few days who have gotten their first shot. 16 and 17-year-olds can only get the Pfizer shot. That's the only one that's approved for them. So as vac, vaccinations and on-demand testing are the main difference between what the public health approach was in October and November and is now. So what I just want to share is that we continue to monitor this several times per hour, we'll say, from the moment we wake up in the morning to the moment that we go to bed at night. This is what we're, we are focusing on, making sure we know what the data is. And we're trying to, again, use the data objectively so that we can make sure that we're prioritizing in-person education as the governor has asked us to do, while also making sure that we're prioritizing student health. Want to move on to talk a little bit about some spring events. Again, with the new guidance, we feel very confident that we're going to be offer an in-person graduation ceremony. Principal Joel Lear has shared that with families that we intend to have a graduation ceremony on Memorial Field as scheduled on June 6th at 2:00 PM. It will be reduced capacity. Graduates will have a limited number of tickets that they will be able to use. But based upon the calculation that we get from the state of how many people can be at Memorial Field, we do believe there's a good chance we can do this in one ceremony. We have left open the option that we might have to break it into two ceremonies. But we're still working through that part. But at this point, based upon the guidance we have, we feel very confident that we can run a commencement ceremony as scheduled. We would not be able to move it inside. So Principal Lear has communicated a rain date to families that we would go that next day in the evening, should there be an issue with weather. I also know that people are always wondering and asking about prom and other kinds of things. And what Principal Lear and their team has put together is a senior celebration that's intended to combine the elements of both prom and the senior lock-in. It's scheduled for Saturday, June 4th. And in your packet, I described what the current thinking around those events are. We talked a little bit about Esser before, and so we did get a little bit more than a million dollars in Esser II funds. And as we are work, we're looking at all of our Esser funds in totality. But we are working to plan for next year. And we know that one of the key things for student learning acceleration is going to be high-quality core instruction. And so we are working to use our Esser II funds to directly allocate new FTE positions to each school for the purposes of specifically at the, at the elementary level, reducing class size and at the secondary level for reducing class size and also adding positions that could help with student mental health. We have a little bit of a different approach at each level, which is why there's different approaches or different priorities there. Excuse me. The district is projected to receive nearly $3 million from Esser III. We do not have these yet. We are hoping we'd get them this week, but unfortunately it looks like it's going to take longer. The next piece that I want to share with you is strategic planning. So we hear a lot about things coming out of the pandemic, right? And I think everybody, I'm a baseball fan, so I use baseball analogies. Everybody wants to hit the grand slam coming out of this thing. And there is no such thing. We know it's going to take a combination of things for us to, to address the acceleration that we're looking for. And that acceleration is not going to just happen over one year. It's going to need to be over several years, right? We have seen the power of cascading improvements or declines in our data. And so what we're going to do this spring is we're going to go out, we're not changing our vision. Our vision is as good today as it was five years ago. We're not going to change our strategic commitments, right? The things that we value dearly. But we do think that we need to get some feedback from our stakeholders, which is our community, our parents, our teachers, our staff, our students. About five years from now, what do you want the district to have accomplished? What are the specific things you'd like to see the district having done and succeeded with in the next five years and really looking to create some more measurable goals for the districts long-term? So that we can get really clear about what the community and about what our stakeholders and what we, what you think as a board, we should be doing so that we can accomplish those things in five years. Because coming out of this, we are just looking at, we got to solve so many problems. And we know when we're all trying to solve so many problems at the same time, none of the problems get solved well. So we're going to ask the community and our stakeholders to give us feedback. As the board, you are going to get to be able to take that information and you're going to give the school district that direction about what are we going to accomplish within the next five years and have a goal. And, and backward map it so that we know each year. And it's going to be some tough decisions because we're going to align our budget with it. So our budget is going to fund the goals that you set for the district over the next five years. That's the vision of this five-year plan, aligning our financial resources with what we want to accomplish for our students. I also in the package, I shared the third pulse survey results with you. We think it's important to make sure that we continue to ask our community for their feedback on how we're doing this year. And as you would expect in this year, sometimes the data goes up and sometimes the data goes down. This was, this survey was conducted just after we announced our return to the in-person learning model for secondary students. But there's a lot of good feedback in this. Some of it demonstrates the COVID fatigue that people have experienced. We read every single comment. The data is disaggregated and given to the buildings for their own buildings to take a look at and work through. And then we'll continue to work on how can we make sure that we respond and provide for things that the people who took the survey have asked us to do to improve their experience in the school system. So that is my report for this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions, comments board members have?
Other question?
Yes, Claudia?
On the, um, the unlock-in and the march and the banquet and all that was thought put together in cooperation with what would have been in, you know, pre-COVID years, the prom committee or parent committee group?
That is my understanding, yes. And right now, what we're really trying to do is to not charge the students for it. Normally there's a charge. Normally there's a fee. We are working to not charge the students for this experience because I think for obvious reasons.
Other questions, comments? Well, we appreciate the, the amazing work that's being done. And, and you can see through all this that, that you have really modeled and, and have used the guiding principles that you set forth initially to, to guide, guide the work and, and following the data and really looking to MDH and the governor and MDE for, for guidance. So my question, a couple of questions I had, one was on the pulse surveys, and I think it's, it's just really excellent that we're, we're keeping a handle on where people are at. And I'm wondering what you might envision the next pulse survey to be or when you would anticipate doing one at this point?
Yeah. So I, I think Julie, the purpose of the poll surveys this year has been to get a snapshot of where people have, are at with, and, and the questions that we're using. We are conducting these surveys with our partners at Studer Education. So the psychometricians at Studer Education have looked at what's the most important ways that we can ask about family confidence, right? And employee confidence. So we're not the only district using this survey. We, we, hundreds of districts across the country are doing that. I don't want to, I, I'm not sure that another pulse survey in this format will be helpful to us this year. Instead, this is where the strategic planning process and the community meetings that we're going to have, we're going to kick that off with Northfield Forward as a, our first test group on Monday. And then we'll be conducting a series of mostly Zoom-based community meetings that will also potentially include a survey part about moving forward. So I think from my perspective, if we, if we ask for another survey at the end of this year, that data doesn't become actionable because we know that next year is going to look different than what this year's. These were intended to be able to help us respond to what people wanted. So I see the next survey as being more about the casting forward of what do you want? What, what are your hopes for the district over the next five years?
Excellent. Thank you. And with Hope being here this evening to present the portage online, I did want to touch on MDE's decision to have MCAs testing and what that will mean with portage and students in quarantine and what kind of challenges the, I know that the test scores will not, we will not have any punitive action as a result of our MCAs, but they are still conducting them. As I understand it, and I'm just wondering where the challenges are going to be for that to happen.
Yeah. So I'd invite Director of Instructional Services Hope Langston to come off mute to talk. We, we started MCAs. In fact, we're nearly done with the elementary science and we continue to work forward. We've had some others that have started. And of course, as you know, we, we, we value data in all of the formats that we get it, quantitative and qualitative, and we try to take that, those pieces of data and make them to our use for student learning. This year, we'll present the number of challenges, both logistically. And then the question about will even those, that data be comparable across the state? I will tell you that that is a little frustrating that we may not see some of those normal comparisons. But Hope, would you just talk a little bit about some of the, some of the way that we're working through those items now?
Sure thing. Hi, everybody. We have started MCA testing and we finished, for the most part, fifth grade science. Last week, we had a class that was not able to test next, last week. And we have our portage families with the option to bring their students in the week of May 10th to Northfield Middle School in the auditorium where we can socially distance. And just know that the state is, has established a special code for this year, EXC. Everybody's good, everybody who does not complete a test will be automatically coded with that 2021 code. And then I would manually go in and change the family refusals. So right now it's proceeding as normal. We just started reading today in some of our elementary schools. Everybody's got their schedule done. And I'm just going to say that we're going to do the best we can. MDE extended the window to May 21st. And we will do our best to get everybody in who we can. What Matt said about state context this year is in fact up in the air. And that, that is frustrating to me. I was able to share that, that, that view on an advisory committee that I serve on last week. And because again, we, we will get proficiency rates, but without that state context, it's hard to know what, what our proficiency rate means. So I'm, I'm really a shout out to all our staff who's done the work to get ready to, to, to actually take the tests. Because, because it is a lot of, a lot of training that has to be done. So we are proceeding as if it is a typical year. And again, we'll do the best we can to sweep everybody into the testing. Because we think it's an important, one important metric to, to gather in this, in this pandemic year to see where our kids are at.
Thank you. Okay. So thank you for the report. We can move on now to approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were a few items in the table file that were to be added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? Right? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Amy. Is there a second? Second by Corey. All those in favor of the consent grouping, say aye. Second by Corey, all those in favor of the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. We can move on now to items for individual action. We will bring back Director of Instructional Services Hope Langston to present the online learning application approval. Because if it's an item for individual action, I'll ask for a motion and then we can ask Dr. Hillman and Director Langston any questions. Is there a motion to approve the online learning application to the Minnesota Department of Education? Moved by Corey, is there a second? Second by Amy, okay. Welcome back, Hope, Dr. Hillman. The, uh, uh, application was in our table file, or I'm sorry, our packet, so just-
Hope does have a few slides to share here.
Did you want to do a present, quick presentation, Hope? I'm sorry, and then board members can ask questions.
Sure, I'll do it. I'll make it as quick as I can.
Hey, no worries, thank you.
All right, so. Um, I, I came before you in February thinking that we were going to move very quickly through this process. And we realized that it was going to be important to gather stakeholder feedback, both from our, our fantastic portage teaching team and our EA team, as well as our parents. Because we wanted to really build the best application that we could. So that's why it took a little longer than we anticipated. But here we go, our application is ready. I will tell you that the, the application you have in your packet is, is somewhat complete because there are a lot of links in there. So just know that there's a lot of additional, particularly standards information that we needed to include that you don't have in the package. So these are the items we'll quickly cover tonight, the timeline, the stakeholder input process, the vendors that we looked at, the collaborative efforts from big nine districts and then the MDE team and what will happen next. So we came before you on February 22nd, then, then sort of took some time to gather the input, look at multiple vendors. We held two plus Delta sessions with elementary parents and then secondary parents. And a shout out to Carrie Duba for helping to lead those. We're coming to you tonight for board approval. And then once we hit submit later this evening, if you approved the application, well, you did actually. So we will have, MDE will have 90 days to respond to the application. And that's written in state legislation that that's their timeframe for response. We do know after talking to many districts who have submitted that there is often feedback that, that needs to be taken into account and resubmit and away you go. But in my meeting with Jeff Playman and John Olson, they were very helpful to me. And they said we can begin enrolling students as long as we say that we are pending MDE approval. So that's good news. Just to go over the stakeholder inputs. We had, I'm just going to look up my parent meetings. We had, let me start actually with our teaching team. We had 18 portage teachers review sections of the application and provide their insights and feedback. So it was the vast majority of our secondary and elementary teaching teams. And I think again, that speaks to their commitment to the program, their desire to have ongoing success as we look ahead. You know, did we, did we hit every aspect of the portage program perfectly this year? No, but we know what we did well and we know what we need to improve. And it was nice to have their inputs on this. I also met with the EA's team as part of one of our regular staff meetings. They also, from their perspective, had some great input about onboarding and, and what we could provide to parents and students to make sure that people choosing portage know the skills and dispositions that might make it a great fit for that family. So then we had our parents come together for plus Delta via Zoom. We had nine secondary parents and 12 elementary parents who joined us for these, this, these meetings. And they had great insights about what we could include in our application and, and other things about the portage experience this year. MDE met with me and provided some exemplar applications, so that was super helpful. And then part of the big nine curriculum and instruction group is just some great collaboration about things that have happened for districts that have already submitted their applications. There, there are many who are waiting because there's still talk about whether or not MDE is going to require us all to offer distance learning again. But these, this stakeholder input piece, while it extended our process, I think was critical to making sure that we understood the perspectives of, of many people involved with portage to help us build an even better program. We looked at the big three vendors for online learning and that would be Edgenuity and then, and Mentum and Apex. Each of them presented to our portage teaching team and provided us with some demo accounts that we could go in and, and look at. They, you know, it's amazing how much more we know now. So our teachers knew what questions to ask and what to look for in the platforms. So we landed on Edgenuity mostly because it is by, by far the, the vendor with kind of the most variety in coursework, the most, the platform that is the most well-developed. And, and again, it's the parent company of Odysseyware. And they have just built some, you know, incorporated some improvements that we know are, are critical. So they, they're adaptable and they continue to make changes to, to strengthen their online programming. So that was the next step. Again, who we, who we were able to collaborate with in the big nine and with MDE. And then looking ahead after this board approval, we'll submit the plan and then begin that 90-day review period. I do want to just mention, we have asked for parents intent on enrolling in portage for the 21, 22 school year twice. The first time was in February where about 50% of the respondents, and granted, our response rate is not what I'd like it to be, but we'll take what we can get, you know, said that they were likely or highly likely to enroll in portage next year. Then at the end of March and continuing through last week, we, we specifically just limited the questions to our families. Would you enroll, what is your intent for enrollment next year? And it was that straightforward. So as you can see, the, the percentages have dropped. And I think what we're seeing is, is remaining uncertainty about the virus. So while 13% said point blank, they intend to enroll, another 29% are unsure. I, I looked at the results again today and we've had some additional submissions. And again, our, our unsure percentage went up to 28%. So I, I just think we're still in a period where we know there's interest in, in an online program, but we can't accurately gauge what that is right now. I, I think that we've learned that portage is, is, is going to be a type of learning model that, that we need to have in Norfield because there's a certain level of demand for it. And that's why we're proceeding with the application. And that's what I have for you tonight.
Excellent, thank you, Hope. So I was looking back when you were here in February presenting this and you said you were committed to writing a strong application and, and well done. You absolutely delivered that for sure. So board members, questions, comments? Amy?
Thank you, Hope, for your presentation. And I'm very excited about the possibility of being able to give this option to our students. One of the things I'm wondering about is I think there might be a higher demand in the high school and with older students to have like a partial portage program. Because they might want to take the five regular classes in high school and then come back and, you know, take two classes that they couldn't take in person in high school. You know, whether they want to take ancient Greece or Greek or, you know, some high-level math class or whatever it might be that we could offer them through portage, you know? Has there been any thought given to how we can have this sort of new type of hybrid between the online portage program and the in-person class?
We, we have definitely thought about that. And in talking to other districts who have become online providers, you know, the advice is go slow to go fast. And so I think in this first year of operation, we are looking at, you know, courses like CTE and some of the art courses and our music courses where it's very difficult to offer those in a virtual environment. That includes AP as well. We know that students will be going into school to take that kind of coursework. But as far as offering a full hybrid, the first year, Amy, we, we feel like that might be a second year initiative to be able to do a full hybrid solution. Because it impacts staffing at the high school, course sizes at the high school. And we just not sure that we can commit to that in the very first year of, of operation.
But it's in the hopper at least, and it's a possibility that someone, you know, at some point in the future could combine learning methods.
Yeah, I think it's a really exciting option, actually.
So do I. Then my second question, and this might be thinking way too far in the future, but I know if we're going to be taking the possibility of students from other districts into our portage program, what happens when it comes to MCA time? You know, and they can't, you know, they're a hundred miles away or something and they can't come to, to the school to take the MCA test. Is that going to be a problem?
So that's a great question and one that MDE wrestled with this year. Because, and in fact, when the kids are taking their MCAs this year, they're actually, the first question they see in their directions is where are you located right now? And it's our, I'm at school or I'm somewhere else. And so clearly, there was a thought MDE was working on the option for remote testing, but it didn't happen. So we are not able to give the MCA remotely. But I do know that virtual schools give that MCA somehow. I don't know enough about it yet to, to say. But this year, they said MCAs have to be done in person only.
Thank you.
Great questions, thank you, Amy. Other questions board members have? I had a couple of questions. So Hope, as you're working so collaboratively with other districts and really getting, you know, great feedback from where other districts are, have you received or had the opportunity to talk to districts that have submitted their applications and have gotten them back and what kind of feedback they're getting? And did that inform your application at all?
It sure did. The biggest, the, the two areas where MDE gives the most feedback is one in special education and the second is in the standards alignment, especially when you're using an outside vendor to offer coursework. And they wanted it in a very particular format. And so, and, and Owatana's was bounced back for that very reason, Red Wings was bounced back. So, so luckily, we were able to share experiences with them and, and, and get after it for our own application and work with Edgenuity to, to come up with the standards alignment work, which is pretty exhaustive, actually. And Cheryl Hall and Sarah Pratt both had input into the special education section of our application. So I, I really feel like, you know, we, we had a lot of input and it was super helpful.
Okay, excellent, thank you. And, and we appreciate that you've really cultivated those great relationships with the other districts. My last question then is Edgenuity, Edgenuity, if I'm saying that correctly. So this year, we used Odysseyware, and I know we're currently using that at the high school for credit recovery and other, other uses at the high school. Would that ultimately replace Odysseyware then, do you see at the high school?
Yes, because Odysseyware is being sunsetted. And so Daryl is already planning on making that transition this summer to Edgenuity for credit recovery as well.
And I think it's important to understand that Odysseyware is actually part of the Edgenuity family. So it's one of the products that is under the Edgenuity umbrella.
Okay, excellent. As I said, Hope, your goal was to, committed to writing a strong application. And I think you have, you have met and exceeded the goal you had for yourself. So we'll vote now on sending, as you said, hitting send to MDE and we should hear in 90 days, correct?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So if there's no other questions for Hope, we do have a motion and a second on the submitting this online learning application to the Minnesota Department of Education. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you again, Hope. So we'll move on now to the teacher laptop refresh. Director Briskie was here in March with quite a thorough presentation regarding the, the laptop for, for staff. We do have in your packet the master lease purchase agreement. Kim, I think you're here just then for questions, correct? And no formal presentation?
Yep, that is correct.
Okay, excellent. So this is an item for individual action. So I will ask for a motion to approve the renewal of a lease agreement for 400 MacBook Airs at a cost of $127,400 each year for four years.
So moved?
Moved by Tom, is there a second? Second by Claudia. Questions, comments for Director Briskie or Dr. Hillman? Okay, great. No questions, comments, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item for individual action is the renewal of the 2020, 2021 Internal Service Fund budget. As you recall, we did get an excellent presentation by Director of Finance Val Merzendorf at our March 8th board meeting. So I'll ask if there is a motion to approve the 2020, 2021 Internal Service Fund Revives budget as presented. Moved by Amy, is there a second? Second by Corey. Questions or comments for Director of Finance Val Merzendorf or Dr. Hillman? Okay, no questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item for individual action is the Policy 438 that addresses student teachers. We had the first reading of this policy at our March 8th board meeting. So is there a motion to approve Policy 438 as presented? Moved by Amy, is there a second? Second by Tom. Questions or comments? I just wanted to say I really appreciated the additional aspects that we added to the policy. I think it really is going to ensure a good experience for our teachers that supervise our students, for the students themselves that are here, the administrators also who supervise them. And we know it's a way that we had often recruit and renew and excellent talented teachers. So I really appreciate, and again, another example, this last was updated 16 years ago. So policy committee continues to do really excellent work. So we have a motion and a second, no other questions or comments, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to, I believe, yes, this is our last item for individual action. Again, a action we take every year regarding- Again, a action we take every year regarding action on non-renewal promotion of probationary licensed staff, excuse me. So is there a motion to adopt the resolution related to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of the probationer probationary licensed teachers as presented effective at the close of the current 2021 school year?
So moved.
Moved by Tom, is there a second? Second by Corey. Questions or comments? Okay, if there's none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Okay, that is it for items for individual action this evening. We'll move on now to items for information. In your packet was the enrollment report, Dr. Hillman?
Yes, so I want to point out, we are working on cleaning up a couple of aspects of the enrollment report. Last month, we noticed that there had been a fairly significant drop at the middle school. And that had to do with a technical coding error. There are some students who participate in a on ALC-like program for part of their day where we need to have them enrolled as part of that program part-time. That part is being worked on being corrected, but there's still an issue with just the total number that I need to get used for further clarification. But what I want to point out to you is if you look at each building, so if you look at, for example, Greenville Park in March, they were at 440. Now they're at 442. You look at Sibley, they're at 495 in both of those months. When we take a look at Bridgewater, 547 and 547 dead on. So two of the three elementary buildings stayed the exact same, one went up. When you look at Northfield Middle School, again, 950 to 956. So that part has been corrected where those students are now part or the students who are partially enrolled in that specialized program are being counted as full-time students now because they they really are just a way of dividing up their percentage of their day. And then you'll see not uncommon this time of the year, we lost nine high school students. But you also see at the ALC, we increased some students. So the key thing is when we take a look at that grand total, we're just going to go back and look at the full-time only to make sure that we have that going correctly. Because you'll see there's a precipitous drop from last month to this month. So we will have this cleaned up. We're also going to increase the font because we know that this has gotten to be fairly small. So we'll work on it. The the point is that we're looking at this enrollment every month. And you're going to see when we look at each building, they have either stayed where they're at, gone up. Or as we know at the high school, it's not uncommon for it to drop in the second semester. Students may transition from the high school to the area learning center. So I apologize, we thought we had that corrected, but we just need to get a little bit more explanation on that for you for next month.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Questions or comments on their enrollment report? We can move on now to the next item for information and update on the Raider mascot refresh, Dr. Hillman.
Yes, I know that you had potentially expected to have a presentation this evening with some options for the refreshed Raider mascot. The final polishing wasn't quite ready yet. And so we are working with local communications company, Newger Communications, who has taken this the submissions and the feedback from the high school committee led by Joel Lear, high school principal and activities director Joel Olson. And they are working on putting that kind of professional polish on a handful of these options that the board will consider. I anticipate that you'll get them the next time, but we, this is one that we really want to make sure that we take our time and do well. So I apologize that we don't have a big reveal tonight, but we know that you want us to get it right. And so we're going to at least take one more cycle here to be able to have that hopefully for you at the next meeting.
Excellent. I completely agree. We need to take our time and I see board members shaking their head in agreement as well. So and other questions for Dr. Hillman regarding that issue? Okay, so that is it for items for information. We can move on now to future meetings. Monday, April 26, Monday, May 10th and Monday, May 24th. All regular school board meetings here at the Northfield District Office Boardroom. Those are held at 7:00 PM. So thanks, everyone. Oh, I'm sorry, Amy, go ahead.
I just have a question about graduation. Is that something that all of the board will be participating in or because of the COVID regulations, will we not be there?
Yeah, so it's to be determined yet. We are still looking what the, we're trying to identify specifically how many people we can have. How many that that, how many are going to actually graduate, what the capacity of the facility is? And then we'll be making that determination about which other folks will be there. Of course, the board's role in our commencement ceremonies is an important and time-honored tradition. As with everything else, things are a little bit different this year, right? So we are still, we we know that the current guidelines allow us to have an outdoor commencement. The key thing is can we get it done in one, which we we think that we can, but we have to make sure that we're following those guidelines. So we will be making those decisions about how many people can be there. And I'll work with Sheriff Pritchard to determine if there needs to be any adjustment to the board rule this year. We'll make that determination and share that with you. Our hope would be that you can all participate like normal. We just need to make sure that we can get the capacity piece correct.
So for now, save the date.
Save the date. And I'd also save the next date too, the the next day because there's a rain date, right? Because again, traditionally, if the weather was poor, we would just move it inside. That cannot happen. So it's going to have to stay outside. And so I'd maintain both of those dates on your calendar.
Sunday, June 6th and Monday, June 7th. Okay, excellent. Thanks for the question, Amy. So so we've reviewed future meetings and thanks, everyone, for a great meeting. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Noel, is there a second? Second by Amy, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign, we are adjourned.